Did you get brain Amy a little bit ago? Does that raise you?
Yeah, just a little.
That's not true, yeah.
I was in Barnsville and they have.
Oh, it looked like it was down for.
Okay, Rutgers. Oh, this thing is named after. Oh, he's got the camera just right on that thing, huh?
It's on all of you.
Yeah, looks good.
Oh, no. Can they see us?
They're gonna see you, so if you wanna sit here, or you can stand there if you wanna be on camera. And then you wanna sign into.
Oh, sure.
Oh, there's already a show.
Well, we have these guys on the agenda.
Oh, they're on the agenda.
So they'll be speaking part of the meeting?
Right, because they're on the agenda.
Okay.
All right, I don't know if anybody else.
You guys do it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, you're looking at seven, but it's only six o'clock up there.
It's pretty much six o'clock, so when we're done tonight, that'll still say.
Yeah.
Oh, unfortunately.
It's right, Christ has to do that today.
So this is a room I could never be laid in?
Yeah.
This is good.
Well, it's nice and hot, so, yeah. We'll start to read with the. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty as its throne. Oh, um, roll call. We've got Ronnie, Amy, Laura, and myself, present Brittany, Nicole, and Lindsay, our gun. First, as I think we're reading, we also have Shannon and Tracy Tolson here, as well as some.
And Wayne.
Wayne. Oh, and Wayne.
Yeah, Wayne, I knew it.
Um, and we have several visitors. The agenda, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
Nope. Okay. Um, need to adopt the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Some.
Motion by Amy is, do you have seconds?
Second.
Second by Laura. Uh, any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those both same sign. Motion carries. Public comments. Um, I don't think we have anybody, everybody slated to speak.
We have.
Did you say yes or no on?
No. Okay. Um, and then, so then we go down to rebel recognition. I'm trying to think, I know you've got some rebel recognition, don't you?
Yeah, just the Trap Kids were in Michigan's nationals. Oh.
Yeah, and they were just talking about it, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they did, they did really well. Um, Hunter?
Yep.
Was there. Um, and then Alex Mather and Ethan Bentley, so. You know the numbers off the top of your head.
He was looking.
Yeah, I was like.
I said I might have worked on during this because he had it, so.
Yep.
Uh, for the first round, Alex Mather shot ninety-five out of a hundred. Ethan Bentley got eighty-one, and Hunter Leach got a ninety-eight. Um, Alex and Hunter advanced to the second round, and Hunter got a ninety out of a hundred, and Alex got a ninety-three.
That's great.
Awesome.
Very good.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, amazing.
What seventeen hundred participants or something like that?
Seventeen, seventeen hundred seventy shooters total.
Okay, and what did he end up getting, or what?
I think the first day placed thirty-six out of seventeen hundred and seventy shooters. And Mather placed two hundred and something.
Okay, it's still out of seventeen hundred.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's crazy. Yeah, good for them. Amazing. Do we have any other rebel recognition? Um, baseball or softball, but I know.
Softball finished today. Uh, Brooke helps with Emily's daughter, I think they got third and all.
Oh, okay.
That's what she said, wait, maybe.
I know there was, I know it's not part of school, but there was a ten U team, the, I think they were state champions again. They were state champions last year, or state champions again.
Yeah, and they head to regionals in Bismarck next weekend.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so, yeah. Impressive, but, yeah. Good call. Alright. Okay, let's go on to item number six, six point one, uh, hinder transportation. I think we have a presentation or.
Do I get to stay here, or?
You can stay right there, as far as I'm concerned. I don't know, David, do you? Yeah, I, yeah, I think.
So I asked you some questions two weeks ago, and I asked you to do a little research. Did any of you do it?
Did you see the email I sent out this afternoon?
I did not.
Okay, I, so when we talked at the last board meeting, I said I'd ask you two to give us till last Friday. Eileen and I met last Wednesday, she had some numbers. I asked her to do some more work on that, and I met today. And then I sent it, so I think it goes to Brittany, or at least that's how it shows up on my email. I sent it out to all three contractors, uh, the numbers that, that Keith, Eileen, and myself worked through again today. And so I wanted to share that with you guys before the meeting, so I just shot email, I don't know, it was maybe three o'clock-ish?
I see it now.
Okay, okay. And so I have that here too, and I have it for you board members, I said in front of what I shared with them. There might, you know what, I think I have an extra copy, so I don't know if that's. Yep, you guys can take this one right here.
Yeah.
So when we left the board meeting last time, I shared with you that we're gonna try to keep it in that, uh, Pender's had anywhere from fifty-two to fifty-four percent of the, of the billing for us. Setters had thirty-two to thirty-five, Leeches were in that ten to thirteen. Um, so the first thing Eileen did is she kinda went, okay, these are the two routes we took away, comes to about a hundred and two. She figured out, okay, if you don't pay the two drivers, anyway, she comes down to the number of seventy-four. So that's a little bit debatable, I don't know what you pay, she thought she would be safe with her number. We didn't dig into what you guys pay them, but that's the number that she came up with, feeling that it was safe. Um, the second page then shows what we're doing to adjust your bus routes, three, seven, four, and six. Shows you this last year, and then next year coming up what the adjustments and gains will be. So she figured it out based on what we have now, kindergartners, the routes, the whatever we have currently, that you'll get thirty-seven thousand, three seventy of it back. So with that number back, that's about fifty percent of that seventy-four. If you go to the next page, Setters, the adjustments from their bus eight, twelve, and some shuttles. Theirs came out to be twenty-eight thousand, nine nineteen, which is thirty-nine percent. And then the last page is Leeches, you'll see that it is sixty-four, thirty-five, and it's the shuttle stuff. And when we looked at that, that came to just short of ten percent. And like Eileen said, anytime you work with a smaller number, it's hard to take the smaller, you know, take it away. So she said this is the number she came up with, she did some adjusting, you could see on their bus nine, 'cause that went onto one of your routes, um, I don't remember which one it was, three possibly. Anyway, to add miles to yours, we took that off of their daily route. So this is a fifty, thirty-nine, and it's like nine percent or whatever. Um, again, like they said, things can change here, we might have to add a shuttle back. So if we have a shuttle back, which shuttle? She was thinking it would probably be bus two for Setters. If Setters got bus two back and they shuttle that eleven thousand, then they're, instead of a thirty-nine percent piece of that pie, they would be closer to thirty. So she said it would be a fifty, thirty, and just short of ten. Um, and I said, you know what, that's pretty close, let's, let's present this, let's go from there. Because the other thing she said is, we could lose two percent here, there could be three, you know, depending on the changes that happen in August with kids, kindergartners, new families, whatever. After a while, when you start looking at these routes, the other thing is how, we're not gonna start driving six miles out of the way where somebody else is driving right by. And that's what she started to run into after making these adjustments. This made the most sense without driving in circles, basically, you know, for lack of a better way to say it. So I guess that's the homework we did, Tim, or that's the numbers, I just wanted, I was hoping, and I didn't get a chance to get to you guys later this afternoon, so, yeah.
We cannot afford to lose two routes, we just can't, there's, there's actually, each route is actually worth money. So you take that away from us, that, that's times two for our business to lose two routes. So somehow, that's gotta be divided by second one, we can lose one. Understand that ten is one that could very well be dispersed. But we can't, I don't think it's fair that you take two from us, that, that's a lot of money that we're losing, and we can't operate under that, we just can't.
I guess that's, Lori, if you look, that's what we tried to do here, to give you miles back. So you're not losing.
No, I'm talking about our business, our worth.
Yep.
With those two routes, that is.
If we were to sell, if we were to sell the business.
Yeah. We just can't, we just can't do that. So whether the other two share a route, share so many months on, and the other one finishes the other road up the rest of the year, make it fair, I don't know, but. I wasn't gonna get nervous, and I'm getting nervous here, sorry.
I'm just talking.
These, uh, the only thing I'm, I'm giving up is two drivers' salary. I have the buses.
That's a new bus.
They're worthless unless I use them. Because you buy a brand-new bus, which we did, because we had a contract with you last year, we ordered a new bus. Takes a year to get it, it's just coming. I'm sitting there with four buses now, you cannot drop insurance on a school bus. So I'm paying insurance on four buses sitting there, so you can't take that off.
You can't drop insurance without like.
Remove it, removing an engine or a transmission, they'll let you cancel, otherwise it will not let you. Like Ronnie, if you're gonna put a truck away for the winter, you wanna put fire and theft on it, park it in the corner of the shed, we can't do that on a school bus. I don't know if you can with other companies, but we have a charter bus sitting down there, which I should remind you guys, 'cause you never hire it. But Barnsville Holly keeps us real busy. And that company will only insure the charter bus if they have all our school buses, and they will not allow us to.
Yeah, and, and I'll just say this, I, I, Eileen wasn't sure on that, uh, that twenty-four hundred dollars, if that was something, she said that today. She said, I'm not sure if they can drop it or not, I'm not sure, but if they can, that's the value she had it at. And I don't know if it's three thousand, if it's, she didn't have it, fine, again. This is why I shared it with you guys, this is why we're talking about it, I'm not saying these are perfect, we know the route ones just because they were there, the numbers.
My point is, and I've told you many times, and I told you guys last time, I need that money at the end of the day. Only thing I'm giving up is two drivers, which I have, which are impossible to replace. And you're asking me to give up a couple drivers. I, I understand you think you gotta make cuts, but we are running for virtually nothing. I know Gary can't give up anything. I talked to Setters today, they said they hate it, they're wondering if I appreciate what they gave up, well, I do, but they can't afford to give that up either, 'cause they're running negative now. I'm running negative, how do I sell a business when I pull the books off and it shows a negative? Um, you're gonna, and you know why it's a negative? I'm, I'm gonna start right back at the beginning, I got, I got notes this time, people, be patient. Alright, and we started negotiating with Tigerson. Oh, God, we got no money for you drivers, 'cause we got a teacher strike going on. You guys be patient, we'll get through this teacher strike, we'll get you some money. We never did nothing. And then the next year, we meet with Tigerson, oh, the COVID hit the country, we don't know what's going on. You guys just keep on pulling your buses up here like dummies, and all our kids, and we'll get you next time. So then Shannon comes, and thought, okay, now Shannon's gonna be fair. Shannon comes, and, oh, God, I got a mess from Tigerson, I gotta clean up here. I got no money for you guys, that's an exact quote from you.
Okay, I.
So we had, we got a raise, but what's inflation this year? Gary argued he wanted ten percent last year when we negotiated, no, can't do it, can't do it, inflation's up twenty-five percent. We're eating all that. Our income and our expenses have gone down, we are running negative. We cannot give up anything. I cannot give up anything, Setters said they cannot give up anything. And I never asked Gary, but I know he can't give up anything, 'cause he's told me a few weeks ago, very good, so. So I'm trying to speak.
So can I, so can I clarify just a couple things, and you guys can have the floor, obviously, again. So the Brian Tigerson mess wasn't a Brian Tigerson mess that I shared, it was a budget that he shared that was a negative two-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand. That, I just, I agree with you, Tim, so I said that was an issue, that wasn't Brian messing it up, it was, that's what our budget is, and I need to look at it and understand it, correct? That's what we talked about, is the budget's in a bad place. Then I said, so because of that, and just coming on board, you can't expect me to know all the numbers, so I said, let's give you a three percent. And then it gives me a year to buy time to figure out what's actually going on, and then I agreed to the second year of a five percent. Now, what happened in this inflation? I'm not in control of inflation, I'm not in control of the, of the fuel costs. They're real, and they affect you, they affect us, so I need then, as a superintendent, look at that whole budget and go, how can I weather this storm next year? The prices aren't changing, like, just about, the crystal ball is, it's not in my back pocket, but I think we all can figure that out. So I have to start looking at, what can we do, can we expand lockstones? What are other schools doing? Other schools are expanding lockstones, okay, what if we did that? That's how we got to this place, right? That's how it started, I have to do my job to protect the tax dollars. And, and I know it affects people, don't get me wrong, that's why I brought you guys in individually to talk, is there a way we can do it? So I just wanted to make sure I clarified something.
But this isn't, we're not just talking this year, this has gone on our last, what, three, four contract negotiations? We've never got what we needed, and like dummies, we agree to it, and we pull up there. Now you're gonna cut us some more.
Okay, so.
And, and, and we had a contract last year, we assumed it was good, we didn't know it wasn't, work the paper, it's written on. So we order a bus, it takes over a year to get a bus, so now we have a bus coming.
Which is much more expensive.
Like everything else, we get, so now we got a bus coming, and you're telling me, put four of them in the shed and pay your insurance and.
Okay, so I wanna talk about the lockstones a little bit, and I understand, I mean, I understand where you guys are coming from, I know you need to cut. I hope you're looking at all, all the areas, which I'm sure you are, not just transportation, but, because it's an easy place to cut. Um, what do you get per student? What do you bring in?
The average, so a, a number that I use in my head, it's a little bit more than this, is eight thousand a student.
Okay, 'cause I heard over nine today for my thing, but it doesn't matter.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not quite nine.
Okay.
Um, well, so I should take that back. Last year, with the dollars that we got from the state and everything, it was not nine. This year, with the new sixty-eighty-three, it's gonna be right around nine, maybe just a touch over, that's true.
Okay, so the work that's got more head buses driving by, are you afraid of losing some of those families or anybody to more head busing, which would take about nine, ten students to?
I had a lot of conversation about that.
But back to where, right where you were before?
Yeah, I thought about that multiple times, Lori.
But, but I do agree that kids should walk, but is it safe enough for kids to walk anymore? I don't know. Is it safe for kids to be on the bus anymore? I don't know. No.
I've visited other superintendents in the state, across the state, what are you guys doing to offset this fuel cost? And I would say that seventy percent of the ones that I talked to that are doing anything at all, it's increasing the lockstone. Which is, again, affects routes, right?
Yeah.
'Cause we're not picking kids up as much, well, it's, yeah, it's not perfect.
Which is my point, you say you're running a deficit, you, you're not doing it in school.
No, we're not.
The whole country.
I agree, Tim, but I also am responsible for this group, that's all I can manage, right?
Yeah, and we all, we understand that, Shannon.
So why should I come to work if I'm, I'm running a negative number?
Well, I don't want you.
That's a whole lot of responsibility.
In the middle of a contract.
The, the timing, I talked to Trent today, and Craig, and Drew, and they agreed too, this timing is all wrong. Why not last year when we were doing a contract? Word around town was that Bob Keel wanted out. Why not say right then, there's a, there's a bus we could eliminate?
Okay, so, to be fair.
Our contract's up next year, why not wait till next year?
Okay, well, there's a couple reasons why last year went the way last year went. Fuel prices, when we negotiated, weren't like they are today, right?
You will get, you will get reimbursed from the government, long before I'll get reimbursed.
For the fuel?
Yep.
If, if that happens, we can discuss it, because I haven't seen anything on the books. There is nothing happened with legislation this year to help school districts, this, this off by any mere, it didn't happen.
Then, then you're gonna tell them, Tim pulled a couple buses out of the shed, and I'll say, I can go drive one anymore.
So I, I guess that's that, right? So I didn't have control of the gas price then, we didn't have that issue then, hey? I didn't know the budget. I'm not gonna come in and, and, and just throw something out there arbitrarily that I have no knowledge on, that's foolish on my part. And I represent a lot of people here, I take that very seriously, and I better know what I'm talking about when I said that. Didn't know it. Ask for that grace of the three percent, we're gonna give you something, I think three percent's. Whether that's fair or not, and whatever you were told before me, I can't speak to that. This year, why are we doing it this year? Because it's gonna cost us over a hundred thousand dollars in fuel escritor, so it's an area I need to look at. I don't have fuel costs in the food service, I don't have, you know, there's, just, so where can I save? What, what's something that's really changed for us? Fuel costs, okay?
Your district that's got school buses, everybody around here, we've talked, and they're looking for drivers and school buses, and then you guys are talking about cutting this back, so I just, I mean, you guys gotta be careful there, too, you really do.
No question about it.
That was.
That's why I sat down with you guys individually to start with.
That's a point I was starting with, did you guys do your homework? I asked you to go to some of these other schools that are looking for buses and find out what they're paying, if they can find a bus to come to their door. We talked to Holly today, she wouldn't tell us, but she said they paid dearly, they hired three buses last year.
They're looking at hiring one this year, because they've got two drivers.
Because they couldn't afford them either, that's the problem.
They can't, they don't have drivers.
Well, it's a multiple, it's a bunch of things, drivers is a major piece of it, no question.
They hired them, and it cost them twice the what it cost us, dummies are part of it for you. I asked them what it costs to train their two drivers, you guys aware of this rule the federal, federal government passed in February on CDLs? She didn't say, what did she tell you?
I'm sorry, that wasn't.
About training those drivers, she said it was very costly, that's all she said. I talked, I talked. I talked to Deb Jurger in Barnsville all the time, it's a Barnsville bus company, which, back to this other point, we are way behind on what other districts are paying around here to begin with. Anyway, Deb Jurger said she's got two drivers to train in. The best she could find was six thousand dollars to get them a license. And she was probably gonna have to pay the driver a thousand dollars to go to a hundred and twenty hours of classroom time. So that she, they look, she was looking at seven thousand dollars to train in a driver. Now, we pay that, that's, that's costs that we have here that you don't, you know, there's costs that you guys don't realize, we got to put a bus driver in that seat. We have no drivers to train in, but when we do find one, thanks to the federal government, it's gonna cost us that much more. We used to spend time with them yourself, get them up to speed, they'd go take their tests, and if they passed the test, if they did it, we'd spend more time with them.
We're never, I mean, we're never gonna get drivers again, there's no one that's gonna do that to track school bus. Maybe someone that, that's what they're gonna do for their living, is to go drive semi to get their CDL? No one's gonna pay that amount of money just to get their bus driver's license to drive fifteen hours a week, you know? And if, yeah, maybe we could take on that cost, but at least they're gonna keep driving with us, not just go take their CDL license that we just paid them to get.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't wanna speak for the board here, but when you guys have those situations, and you have a driver that you need to send to training, and we talk to you and visit with you about what that's gonna cost, I'd like to have us have a share in that, or a piece in that, or whatever, or potentially visit with you about that number. So when that becomes a reality, and you need to send Shannon to training, and it's gonna cost you two thousand, three thousand, whatever thousands of dollars for training, I would like you to visit with us, so we can discuss about how we can share that potentially, or whatever that might look like. Because, well, so then let's see it, and let's talk about it. I, I, that's a discussion, why? We need you. We have to have, we have to have skin in that game, I, I totally understand it. And so I wanna help you with that, if it's possible, I do.
You guys don't need it for your class threes, and your.
No.
Those you bought, says activity, does not need that.
Doesn't, you're.
School bus, we gotta have that.
I realize that, Tim.
And like Brittany said, we spend that money on a driver, and all of a sudden, they say, oh, jeez, ask them to, because I got a license now, and they're gone. Money lost back, right? That rule has gotta change, and I, nothing to do with this meeting, but I said, I think the schools should all be involved in trying to get that rule changed.
I, I don't disagree at all.
That's nationwide.
It is, it's ridiculous.
You can have a contract, but. You can break that.
What, yeah, what good's a contract?
I do have one more question, and I need, and I'm sure it's fine, but did you guys buy him a pickup, three-quarter ton pickup?
That was before I got here, so.
Two years ago?
Oh, so I thought.
Well, we probably ordered it three years ago, and then board quit building in that year, so I got delayed a year.
Raleigh was still on the board when we ordered that. Okay, so you didn't just get one recently? You guys use that for? Yeah, what does that mean? Oh, okay, just.
We needed three-quarter ton of pole trailers, too, that move the skid steers back and forth for different events.
So it's all here somewhere?
It's six and a half.
Oh, okay, okay, I, I thought they just got anyone else that can sculpt the one or something.
Well, it's at least two years ago before it came, and then, like I said, I think we ordered it three years ago.
Well, Raleigh hasn't been on the board for like two and a half, 'cause he left early, 'cause he moved to North Dakota, so.
Yeah, that's right.
He was part of purchasing that decision, that's fine, I just, that was a new thing, so.
Well, I can tell you, I can tell you this, if this superintendent buys something, it's to invest it, wait, back into the district and make money out of it.
No, I, I.
Because I can't afford it.
Yeah, I do trust.
Obviously, because here we are with you guys, and I'm trying to figure out how we can do this best. It's, it's not, I don't know.
You, you talk about our expenses, we, another expense there that's not right is, for example, these four buses that I'm parking, I can buy a brand-new bus, there's a three-year warranty, when that warranty's off in three years, that bus is probably worth half of what I paid for it. When that bus is five years old, you're lucky to find a buyer.
Yep, I tried to sell them in Lancaster, where it was less.
So when that bus is from five to twelve years old, or whatever, the only way we're gonna make money with that bus is by using it.
Yep.
It, it's worthless to sell it.
And I believe we did expand, and not much, but we did expand the years of usage, I think, in our contract.
Right, but if I'm parking four buses, you're.
And so can I ask, and I'm sorry?
I can't sell them.
What do you say four? I'm sorry, why are you parking four this year?
'Cause we bought a new one, we're gonna have ten buses now, 'cause we thought we would have two spares this year, because you were always.
I was just trying to figure out how you were parking four when we took two routes, I'm sorry, I'm just asking, I got you.
You were always short on route trips, so we thought we, Jake and I talked to Lori, we thought, well, we'll get another bus, we're due anyway. We'll have two sitting there that we can do route, when, when they're out on routes, we can do two trips for you.
Right, and we are hoping with our time change with the school, with the routes starting earlier, that you can get back, like I did share, I'm hoping there's some more route availability, or activity routes available. I know the dollar amount is different, I know the contract that way, but I'm saying, I'm hoping you can get more of those, because our bus routes, those drivers will be back sooner to take.
And I'm, and I'm glad to hear that, 'cause you're telling me my four buses can stay parked, because now the route buses can do parts.
I guess so.
Well, basically, that's it.
Well, I'm just telling you, we're trying to give you some work, Tim, that's all, I.
Now that, so, okay, so after-school activities really don't pay that much, is that an area where you could cut back? I mean, I know that the kids, we need to keep the kids busy, they need to play games, but is that somewhere where you guys could cut back? Maybe not so many.
Well, it's why we invest in the activity bus.
Like games to Fargo, when they don't really count, you know, that kind of thing, is that, is that a place where you could cut back? Instead of our buses?
Well, me, I think as a policy matter, you know, from the school, try to do it best for kids. And I don't know that that would be best for the kids. We wanna make sure the kids have our inner activities, that they have opportunities.
I do, too.
And, and I'm sure you guys do, and I, I think it's good that you think, trying to think of creative ways, uh, 'cause I think that's part of what's gotta happen in order to get everybody on board, because, you know, I can't speak to contracts that happened prior to Shannon either, I mean, uh, like, you know, I had talked with Brian at the time, um, yes, there are a lot of curveballs, you know, COVID was kind of a hot mess, we didn't know what was gonna happen, and I don't know how, you know, we see things on the front end on a contract, we don't know how things turn out, you know, and something didn't go well for you guys, we, I mean, we just don't know that.
I, I'm just trying to explain, we have expenses you guys don't know about, and, and we are all running on a very small profit, if any, and you're taking more away, and now we're running a negative number, and we all, everybody, Brittany, you're graduating from Lynn, and we're proud of the school, we love all the kids, but why in the world should we take that, it is a large risk. When you talk insurance, and you talk about hauling kids, you paid for that insurance, I think more than the twelve hundred dollars a bus you got there, I think you're pretty low. But, uh, I'm not sure, 'cause Brittany does the numbers, I have no idea.
Yeah, it might be a little light, and again, when, when Eileen did this, she was taking her best guess to be.
But why, why should I give up vacation time, I, I, we, driving a bus is full-time, we, we take you guys to Aurora, we're back at one o'clock in the morning, and now you wanna start a bus route at six, six-thirty, we gotta be back in the bus, and there's no time. And there's no time for nothing and, you know, there's maintenance to those buses too, they don't always just.
When, when do we need to make this decision? The next meeting?
Well, I, I think.
We're not doing it tonight.
No, no, we're not making, I guess this is why, you know, we started the conversations with you guys a few weeks ago or whatever it is now, maybe it's a month ago, meeting with each one individually. Meeting with you as a group, uh, wanted to figure out some percentage adjustment, so it's not one company taking it, I didn't want that either. Uh, trying to be what's equitable, I don't know, I mean, we're trying to figure out what that is, what's that number? That's how we came up with this, this is what I had asked Eileen to do, her and Keith worked it, we met again today. Because last Wednesday she had some numbers, I wanted to have more work on it, so we visited again today and this is what we have right now. This is not in stone, but it's a discussion and this is what we're all in, you guys got to hear it, our other board members will get to watch this and hear it as well. We need more discussions with you guys, but this is coming soon, so we need to make sure our families know too. Uh, we made some adjustments on the walk zone, that's been approved. We've, uh, made the decisions on start and stop times, those have been approved, so now we need to work with inside of those parameters, what can it look like? I, I, I just, I think it's only fair that I give kudos a little bit to Eileen and Keith, they have worked tirelessly, tirelessly on this for two weeks, trying to figure out what's fair. They want it to be fair, they appreciate all the contractors, they really do. And I just thanked her again and Keith today for their time they spent on trying to figure this out. It's a difficult thing to take routes and try to make it the right number, it just is, and I think you guys probably understand it too, so. I want, I think we all wanna be fair and I don't, whatever that is.
We are in agreement that two routes being taken away from that stuff, so something's gonna happen, you're refigured there.
Yeah, well.
Which is not fair, it just really isn't. And I know nobody wants to lose anymore, but it's just.
To, to wrap up my thing, you, you can take two routes, but my point is since the very beginning, you'd think you can make cuts, but. We need that money at the end of the day. You pay me for six routes or you pay me for eight routes, but I need X amount of dollars at the end of the day, or it doesn't work, and if it doesn't work, it doesn't work.
I need to sit down with you guys, uh, and, and meet again to talk about the numbers more specifically. Because we have a budget that we preliminarily, we approve the preliminary budget, I should say. It's not in a great place, uh, I need to figure out then how can this impact that or help, but how can we work together? Because I can't continue on this path, this, the school can't. Because then I'm gonna have to go to the taxpayers and I'm gonna have to ask for an operating referendum, which I'd like to avoid. Plenty on buildings and all the other stuff, but I also, I think. State gives us a dollar and I'm working with it and I'm trying to make it work for everybody and it's not just transportation, it's not just food service, I got non-certified, I got certified staff, I got, anyway, and you guys know this, so. I just need to sit with you more and I, and it needs to be soon, so we can. Whether it's a route back, it's, and then how does that adjust other routes, I mean, we have to cut some money in transportation, I'm just, I mean, I just can't afford it. So, we can't afford it, I don't wanna, you know.
You said you're not paying that in food service, yes you are, you're paying transportation, I, don't tell me you're buying food.
Oh, no, 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 it's, oh, no, it's changed a lot, so we've had to adjust that too a little bit, don't, for sure, I'm just saying. This specifically, this is what I know here, we're working, there isn't a department that we're not digging through. You can ask every principal what I've put on them this year with their budgets, they're, they're living their budget this year because they need to.
If we, if we go through, if we all agree and go through on what our current, what your current plan is, are you guys open to negotiating? To raise that a little bit, so we're getting a little bit more of that back?
I think this is where, you know, at this board meeting, I think we've got great discussion, I really appreciate, I mean, I don't wanna. But we need to have, I need to sit with you, Eileen and I need to sit with your group, uh, more to define exactly that, Brittany. And then it's, these guys are the decision makers, right? There's three people that aren't here tonight, they're the ultimate decision makers that we need to work through, whatever that might be. Don't get me wrong, I want this to be as equitable as we can, I also need to make sure I'm doing my job for them.
Okay, so how, how can we, I talked to Sandy Hock today and I was kinda telling her all about this and, and thinking that the, the state should be reimbursing more.
Wouldn't that be nice?
But she said they are terrible to work with, so how can we make that happen? Because they're the ones that should be taking care of you guys.
Well.
And they're the ones that have caused this problem as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I, I think we'd be more open to discussion today and over the last month, if the state would have done anything for school districts with the surplus. They didn't, period, right across the board. And I hope it does.
Never go without Prince money.
Yeah, unfortunately, that doesn't help us either, but anyway, that's a different show. I'll tell you, right, and, and you can ask, and we talked to Paul Markert, we talked to him, he was beating his head against the wall a little bit too. He was trying to go to bat for us, I had multiple conversations, it's not like I'm sitting in an office going, gee, oh, it works out today. I mean, we're working to try to figure out the same thing, right? It's, but at the end of the day, when the people with the money, we're a public entity, it's what it is, and when they send us a check, that's what we get. And, uh, do they sometimes give us money for things? Yep, they do, Tim, and when they do, we try to use it, or my job is to be as physically responsible as I can with it, so we have longevity, we have sustainability. It's not just, uh, oh, we got some money, let's spend it all quick, it's, that's, that's foolish, so I need to, I need to be a good steward of the, the community's money, so. But I also get, you guys are a part of this community, you've been a part of this community your life, and so you're invested too. I understand that.
You know, all, all lenders coming in and taking care of you. I mean, they'd probably do a good job, but that's not the same.
Since you didn't use our charter for the softball trip to the city, just ask the softball team if they had a good trip or not with the poor lenders.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Or you were there, you knew.
Well, I walked out here to say goodbye, but why?
Oh, I thought.
Or the bus broke down, the driver was grumpy, they were just.
I thought you were down at the state terminal.
I went down to the state terminal, yeah, and I was here when they did the send-off, I guess I didn't know why the busing setup was the one it was.
Oh, no, no, that they had trouble to drive.
Oh, yeah, no, well, I, yeah, well, my daughter was there, she told me.
She wouldn't take them where they wanted to go. They had a real good time, from what I heard, I, I really appreciate my bus that, I mean, watching another bus.
And I can't speak to that, I'm sorry, I wish.
So I know you all are businessmen, my point is, would you continue on a negative path with high risk? I mean, you can't cut us more, period. You do what you want with the routes, but at the end of the day, I can bring books in and show you, if you don't believe me, it doesn't work. So, that's just my point.
When you brought in the plan and then the school board agreed on it, the whole cutting for team, you know, the whole plan.
Well, we didn't talk about routes, we just talked about the walk zones. We weren't specific, we didn't do any cutting on any routes, this is just my conversations with you.
They didn't know what was happening to each of the contractors and how much each company was losing or anything.
No, we.
We had conversation about that, okay.
Yeah, there was gonna be cuts in transportation because we're gonna expand walk zones, just like. Multiple school districts scenario for one reason is to cut costs, okay, how are we gonna do that, then what's it gonna look like? We didn't get specific into Route 10 or Route 14, but we said, we have to make some cuts because the fuel escalator is gonna cost me over $100,000 next year. So, is there a place we can adjust? And that's, again, it's not me just waking up in the morning and saying, gee, I like this idea, let's do it. I mean, I'm talking to other people, what are you guys doing, why are you doing it, is it a save? And then I can do the numbers and I, again, share with Eileen and Keith and this is kinda where we're at today, I guess.
Is, is there a way of you keeping track of maybe losing students more because of this?
For sure, we will be able to. For sure. Yeah, no, I don't want that like anybody else, so I, I mean, it's.
The ones who're gone, it's too late. And I don't see a saving a whole lot of fuel because we're still covering these miles, so I really don't get over saving fuel. The routes are longer, we're burning more fuel than we did, you know, we're still burning the same fuel, is what I'm saying. In town, the buses are in town, we're not burning a whole lot of fuel, making a few stops, three stops.
She, she has the mileage numbers, so, I mean, we know we're saving miles because she can punch it all in, but.
You're saving miles, sure, but not a lot, I'm saying. It's not gonna be a great bit, no.
And I think you'll appreciate the conversation very much and we're just gonna have to move on, but, you know, it's important that everyone works together, come up with a solution that, that works. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
All right, uh, we'll go on to 6.2, maintenance report. Uh, maintenance report, uh, met with Ryan and Ryan, I meet with them weekly now, uh, to make sure, and our admin meets, uh, Wednesday. Uh, and now at our admin meetings, we are creating this, the help desk list for them. We're going to, for example, um, last time our admin meeting, uh, at our admin meeting, we came up and we discussed a little bit, what are some projects that we need to make sure that Ryan and Ryan know? Are a part of our priority, priority list, what's first, what's second, what's, because there's a lot going on. Um, if you know, all the Ben Qs were a part of that grant that, uh, that, um, John Jacobson wrote, and it's also part of the construction project, have the Ben Qs put in. Uh, the maintenance crew is ahead of schedule, was setting those up, Dan Dilworth is almost. It's a Ben Q, it's like a smart board.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So, uh, it's more of an interactive TV, but it's, it's the new version of a smart board. Remember that game, uh, John wrote that, um, grant money for that, we get over 300,000 for that, so. Um, anyway, that, they're ahead of schedule on that, so then when I said, when you have downtime with that, what are you working on? What are your priorities? And that help desk ticket, for example, a teacher might say, I need that legs on my desk raised or lowered. Especially now with moving, right? Uh, this is not, okay, well, where is that on the priority list? Does that happen? Now we have some downtime with the Ben Qs because we're waiting for more other frames that'll hang up here to hang the TV on. So what are you doing first, second, or third? So that's what I'm visiting with them weekly, um, and going through that checklist. It's been good, they're extremely busy, the other thing is, of course, they're hopping around just like a custodial group, as Tracy could tell you, bouncing around construction. It's like you wipe it down, you clean it and then shut the door and open, you know, it stays open, so. It, it's kind of a battle, the maintenance guys are dealing with some of that same stuff as they're working and trying to fix things and then somebody comes through and knows change or different, so. Anyway, um, it's, it's just a good system, I think we have in place for the rest of the summer. Uh, we'll meet again with the admin team, like I said, this week, we'll get a list of, okay, what's on the help desk tickets, what is priority one, two, and three? And I, like I told those guys, I said, sometimes something that's not even on your list right now, but it comes up. And this construction, something finishes, we gotta have that done first, okay, well, then that's gonna be done first, but. The one reason I want the admin team on that is because they know C and everything else that I don't see, and so is there something that you have to have done before we start school? Yeah, we do, so. I think that's where we're at with that, both of those guys, uh, have done a nice job, in the summertime, they spend a little more time together because then they're not gonna step out together. And so I think that so far has worked out pretty well. Yeah. Any questions on those guys or?
The Ben Qs, are they replacing every smart board?
They will eventually, they're, it's not 100%, but it's, uh, the grant paid for so many of them that we thought, well, that's what the grant, number one, it was written for that. And so to offset that cost, so it's like, okay, well, if it's set for it, let's get them and get them up and get them going. Uh, are we able to do it? So far, we've been able to keep up and I think we're gonna be okay.
How do you determine which teachers are getting the new technology?
Yeah, that was the process too, um, and so the bulk of them are getting them. Uh, some had already had some, so it's not like nobody had them before, I mean, that's why I guess we went with them because we knew they were effective. I had used the same thing of that in Lancaster, so it's, it's a good system, so. Yeah, there's a process for all of that, Laura, that's a good question, but, uh, there are a few that won't have them, so, but, anyway, it's going well. Uh, 6.3, um, custodial report.
All right. There's two, there's three. Overall, maybe just, um, a little update on, on what we're doing so far this summer. I think the first thing I'll hit on is our summer cleaning, um, with school getting out, um, the way it did, um, we really had a plan in place right away to. Get into some of these spaces that weren't under construction, um, and get in and do our carpet cleaning and any waxing that we need to do. I would say for the rooms that are not under construction, we are a lot further along than we ever would have dreamt we would be. Um, for us, um, we have the fifth grade wing, um, in elementary, I'm gonna call it the elementary, was under construction, but everything on the east side, all of those rooms are done. Um, most of the high school rooms are all done, um, big rooms for us that, um, take a lot of time, or any rooms that have tile, when we have Mr. Spremski's room, Ms. Tullosen's old room, the art room. Um, science rooms, all of those rooms are cleaned and waxed already. So a lot of the rooms that have, um, um, availability for us to get in are pretty much knocked out and done already. Um, we're doing a lot of things right now, we're going in and wiping off tables and lunch tables. Some of those, uh, things, we're putting in rooms and we're making sure every time we're done, we shut the door. We constantly remind the construction people, please shut the door behind you so we don't get a lot of dust. We also, um, are, um, going in there daily just to wipe down, just in case anything gets in there. In the event, um, uh, construction or someone's in there that, um, didn't shut the door. So I would say I'm so happy with the way the, the staff are working, um, it's been phenomenal. So, you know, we all know that as we get into fall, we're gonna have to, um, have a lot of last minute things, but I'll touch on a little of that down below. Um, one thing that I really emphasize to our staff is, some of them might not take their vacations as diligently as they should. Um, and one of the things, and Brooke can correct me if I'm wrong, is, um, a lot of them take their, they're supposed to take their vacations in the summer. For the last year, I just said, if we can make your vacation work and you wanna go somewhere in the wintertime, we're gonna do whatever we can to make it work. And it has, just the morale boost of, boy, Tracy, I wanna take an extra day off at Thanksgiving, has been just remarkable. So, um, we're trying to get some of those vacations down, um, a few of them have a little higher balances that I, than I would like to see. They're just here all the time, um, so they've been kinda burning up some of that, so which has been nice. Um, we also have been trying to avoid, um, buying a lot of supplies or inventory that really just sit on the shelf. Both sites have gone through the inventory in both our custodial spaces, and I said, whatever we aren't using, let's use up. Um, let's not order it again, so, um, they've gone through both sites and we're, um, using everything we possibly can. We have a lot, a lot, a lot of pure sanitizer. Um, it's almost taking up the whole back second floor, um, area. Um, I tried, um, visiting with Brenco, the vendor, to see if they'll take it back, and they said, if we took it back, we'd be taking everybody's back. So Tracy, you're just pretty much stuck with it, so, um, just be thankful, maybe you got some federal dollars to pay for it. So, um, a lot of supplies and, um, and equipment, even just when we look at our new gyms that are coming on, the extra garbage cans we have in the building, all of those things. How many do we need to repurpose down to these other spaces? So we're trying to utilize a lot of that and keep our inventory low, they deliver every week, so why have so much on stock? So, um, that's what we've been doing. Um, the staffing, um, you'll see, I did note where we're at, um, you'll see Dilworth, um, the second page might give you a little bit more information. Um, Dilworth, we have five FTEs over there, Glendon, we have four. Um, what we've tried to do, probably piggybacks a little bit on what Tim and others have said, is we've really tried to really look at our staffing and our budgets for our custodial. Um, in the last year and a half, and truly tried to say, how can we utilize students? How can we provide them an opportunity for employment by yet, but, and yet, saving on the benefits and, and some of those areas. Right now, we have six students that are working with us this summer and they have been phenomenal. We've hired one of the Dilworth Food Service gal, who was only during nine months, she's helping out in Dilworth. We also have another part-time custodian who's an NDSU student, who's helping in Dilworth as well. Um, and they have been just one, just wonderful, um, to work with. One of the things that I noted, um, in both of them, the vacancies that we've had, and I've shared this with Shannon, um, in the last month or so, is. We really tried to look at our staffing and not rehire those night supervisors that we had or our director of custodial, and try to say, what can we absorb? What can we utilize with our internal staff so that we can save some dollars? And that's, you know, why we haven't kinda rehired those spots and we're trying to utilize them with students. Um, as we look at the needs for '22, '23, um, one of the things that I've done is I've met individually with every single custodian that we have at both the Dilworth and Glendon sites. Um, that are affected by changes for this coming year. When we look at the Dilworth site, we used to have two day shifts, um, seven to 3:30, over there, we're adjusting it, so we're gonna have one day shift, seven to 3:30. Um, and I just, you can look at this at your leisure, the second page. Um, and, um, the one that we have, we have a seven to 3:30, a 10:30 to seven, we have three night people, um, but we're also taking on additional space. We have three night people, but we're also taking on additional space. So we're gonna try to utilize those with student hires. And when you look down, say for Dilworth on the second page, four to eight, we truly aren't even locked into that time. Whatever we can find, it might be a college student who says, I can work six to ten. We're flexible on that, so this is just taking into account that our goal is to hire maybe some high school or college people that can, one, help us save on the benefit side of it and utilize our students. Right here in Glendon, we have six over here, and they're just awesome. They've taken a whole zone, they do the whole elementary, and three of them are heading off to college, so. But anyway, we have some staff that we did, like I say, we had Dilworth had two day shifts. I let the one know that truly by looking at their strengths and placing them where we need them. And so one of them I've adjusted to a little bit later, that they come in for right before lunch, and then when the day is over for the elementary, they go in and they have to knock out these rooms, that's, that's the intent. Our days, we have an individual that worked in Dilworth, is gonna be coming over to work in Glendon on the day shift, and one of our night employees is gonna move to a nine to five thirty shift to help with the commons, taking on the commons, and they will literally split the building into two different sections. So one will be responsible for the activities area and the gym so that they can help get all of that ready by the time game time comes. So the students that we did have over in Dilworth last year, they've worked with us in Glendon this summer. They're gonna actually stay with us in Glendon this summer, so that'll help probably with an FTE. So the goal is to utilize students so we can save some, save some dollars. The other thing that we'll do again that we did last year is we did hire custodian students to work in our concessions. So they would come in, they would set the concessions up, then at five o'clock, I would move them out into the gym and say, okay, set up the game. When you're done setting up the game, then come back and work in the concessions. When concessions is done, now go back into the gym and clean up everybody's mess. So we really moved them from job to job throughout the night, but we had them for five hours, and that allowed our full-time custodians to work in different areas. So it was a, it was a real win-win for us. And the other thing that we chatted as, as a group was making sure, and I mentioned this to them months ago, is when we go into the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, some student, some staff works strictly at Dilworth, some work strictly at Glendon. We need you to be well-versed on what to do at both sites, so we'll have a rotation schedule on all staff that when a weekend event comes up, you might be, you can look down the list to see, where am I gonna be? And look at, we'll have a calendar up, and you will know the rotation instead of everybody just arbitrarily signing up. We just need everybody to do their fair share on weekend coverage because there's definitely a need when we have things going on. Lastly, we have Lakes Country coming in, we're gonna do a custodial training this Thursday with our custodial staff just to provide them some more educational training opportunities, so. That's about all I have.
Any questions for Tracy?
I just wanna, I do wanna say this, so Tracy alluded to it multiple times, and one of the things we talked about a lot is these students. Yeah, it saves dollars, it also gives them opportunities, and it is a win-win. The other thing I wanna say is the full-time people we do have, though, are extremely appreciated. I know Tracy talks to them all the time, I set up meetings with Tracy on that, those teams, the Glendon team and the Dilworth team, we try to meet with them about every six weeks or so, I try to make sure I touch base with one of those groups, so. It's just great to see, it's also great to see those adults accepting these high school kids and working alongside, aiding them, helping them, assisting, so. It, it has been not only an efficient thing for us financially, but it's also opportunities for kids. I will add that I met with Eric at the food service, and we're looking at, with Mary Wilson going training for work release, and we're gonna have some high school students, instead of hiring some people in the kitchen, some special needs kids that can help with the salad bar, with some of that serving, and then Mary Wilson can help train them, and that'll be in Dilworth and here as well. Hopefully, that'll save us some dollars, but it'll also give them some real work experience. So those kids, either they come back and we hire them in the future, or they can go somewhere else, so. Eric was wide open to that, he had a lot of experience with those students at NISU, so, same concept.
Yeah, and I would say, I echo exactly what Shannon says. You know, it was kind of like when we were finalizing a lot of our shifts and things like that, in my head, you constantly remind them of their strengths and what they bring, and I look at this summer and having six of them over here, just seeing what the knowledge those students are walking away with by our full-time staff. They've never waxed before, some of them are eighteen, seventeen years old, and they've literally waxed a science room. But they couldn't have done that without the knowledge of our full-time staff, and it's even just scheduling the shift saying, you know, overall, I can have a plan and say, this is what I'd like to see our shifts look like, but at the end of the day, I'm not the smartest person in the room. I rely on them for input and just their energy, and, you know, I was talking to one of them today, and he's, you know, Tracy, I really, really need to be on this shift, otherwise, you know, I, it's just not gonna work. And we compromised and tried to come up with a plan that made it work, and by the end of the day, two, two heads are better than one, and it was a win-win for both of us, and he walked away happy, and I was thrilled as a peacock that everybody, you know, works so well together, and they're just excited to be here, you know? So we're lucky, we're very lucky.
Thank you, Tracy. Six point four, board committee reports, I think the committee was the policy committee.
Yeah, we had policy, we went over that, I know Brittany sent an email out. We did not personally change anything that was not recommended by the state or MSBA.
Yeah, the only thing would have been that tuition. So we updated the tuition to sixty, sixty-three, and that outstate was eighty-two, thirty-five, sixty, so. It just goes proportionate percentage-wise of what we get, whatever the state gives us, that's what we're charging all state people. So we don't lose any revenue when a student comes from outside. They are required to pay that tuition, and so it's the same, same expense, so it follows something, there's a reason why we charge what we charge.
On the open enrollment lottery process, is that the policy where we cap our enrollment numbers?
Yeah, and we didn't, we looked at that too, and, and there was no reason at this time to do anything with it, just because.
We still have a lot of wiggle room there, so if we were getting closer to the toupee and zone of that number that we have written there, then we probably would have had further discussion on that, but we, we do have a lot of wiggle room in each grade, so we're not.
There's a couple that are getting a little closer, but they're still, like Amy said, there's wiggle room, and I think we're gonna be fine, so.
Very good. Six point five, superintendent report.
Yeah, so the first part was the transportation, but we, I think we discussed that pretty well, there's further discussion that needs to take place, so. I think that's been covered pretty well. Enrollment update, our number's up a little bit, and so that's a positive. We finished fifteen thirty-nine, and I believe we're at fifteen fifty-six, is the number, so that's good. And.
Fifteen what?
Fifty-six.
Is that?
Some of this maturation, so it's graduation, a kindergarten come in, but our kindergarten class, and what is our latest number kindergarten now?
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight, so still hoping for about ten more of those, and we'll see, but.
Is that, is that actual students or is that?
Actual enrollment, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's actual, it's not weighted, that's without the weight, so remember, seven, twelve, you get one point two, so, yeah. That's not weighted, that's the actual student, so. When we ran the budget, Marcus and I, we ran it at fifteen forty, do you remember the number? I have it here. Oh, anyway, so it's up from that, which is good, so. I have it in one of my pieces of paper here, what we ran the budget at, but anyway, it's up from that, so we'll gain some there, and that's a good thing. Construction update, that's kind of an ongoing project. Lot of discussion with everybody. I don't wanna get in the weeds too much because there's a lot happening behind the scenes that we're working through, so. Had a little snap pool over the weekend because it's what it's been like this year. High school gym, the brand-new gym here, had some oil substance coming out of the H-trac system that was on the gym floor. It was discovered Sunday. Travis from Comstock really appreciate that, he came up and he was in there wiping it down. Excuse me, didn't do any damage. They're investigating, they got climate control in there, we got Peterson Mechanical, Peterson Mechanical, I've never seen anything like it. I said, well, what else is new? So they are still trying to figure out what it is exactly, it was all covered, and then this morning, there was more on the floor and on the cover, so Travis had set it up before he left Friday, or, sorry, yesterday, and so it didn't do any damage, it's just like, it just, it's just one more thing, and it makes you nervous about six months, a year from now, two years from now, so, anyway. Worked through that, still working through that, it's unofficial, but really spending a lot of time and conversation about our shop that is supposed to start, and I'll leave that right there for now, too. It's gonna be done, it's, I'm gonna make sure it is, it's just, yeah, it's, it's not McDonald's around here, it's more one of your favorite steak houses that you gotta sit and wait for. And I just hope it, it better be well done. Anyway, so, lot going on with that, it's moving forward, there's a lot, if you walk around the building today here and or Dilworth, you're gonna see a lot of progress because there's a lot of people on both sites to try to get it out. I am attending all construction contractor meetings on Wednesday, plus the OEC meetings on Thursday, just to make sure we push it faster, I convinced JLG, if you notice my email that I sent, I shared that with you guys, that I shared my displeasure, what, Friday ago, or whatever. So JLG is showing up now to all of those contractor meetings as well, so it's just, anyway, you sent my email.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, that's encouraging, and so, yeah, we're pushing.
So, any questions for Shannon? Very good, on to seven, seven point one, regular reading due twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Some.
Motion by Amy, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ronnie. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Eight point one, the consent agenda, business claims and accounts, or do you have a number for them?
Three hundred fifty thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars, sixty-five six.
The Treasury's monthly budget report is included in the material. We have a retirement, approval of retirement of Renete Schmitke, food services effective August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some.
Motion by Laura, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Amy. Any discussion?
Anything different on the retirement, or that's just the standard language on that one?
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
And it looks like, and I didn't see anything in the bills with you either, so.
One thing I just wanna say, the budget I found on my sheet was fourteen, I'm sorry, fifteen forty-six is what we use for an ADN number.
Fifteen forty-six.
Fifteen forty-six, and we had fifteen fifty-six, I just wanna, so. We discussed earlier about nine thousand, so nine ten ten, or go ninety-five. As long as it stays that way when schools start training, so, anyway, just wanted you to know that was our preliminary budget number, so.
Any other discussion? We got a motion, a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. On to nine point one. This is to approve the fees for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year as presented. Do I have a motion?
Some.
Motion by Amy, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ronnie. Any discussion on the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fees?
Or anything you family people seen, or anything different on the family ones, or?
Remember the caps, yes, remember we made those adjustments last year? Remember when Joe presented that to you guys, and we did not adjust them again? We loved that because that was an increase last year. The one thing, remember, we talked about the free lunch and the reduced lunch, so that's what, something that changed in years, so.
Right, yeah.
But.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Nine point two, legal firm, this is for the approval of Ralph Anderson, Swires, and Waltz, Miss River, law firm out of Minneapolis as the official school district council for twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Do I have a motion?
Some.
Motion by Laura, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ronnie, any discussion?
This is our current one, too, right?
It is, yeah, yeah.
I didn't know all the names before.
Yeah, there was, I think, there's an added one or two there.
Because there's Waltz, Ralph and Anderson, yeah, the other name I don't know. Right. Any other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Nine point three, this is motion for second reading of the policies listed and to approve them. They are the family medical leave policy, the harassment and violence policy, the harassment and violence form, mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse, out-of-state tuition, and open enrollment lottery process. Do I have a motion?
Some.
Motion by Amy, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any discussion?
I will say this, if Amy, you remember, four thirteen, an harassment and violence form, it update that, so it's protected class, so it doesn't have all that verbiage, she also changed that form, so it follows the MSBA four thirteen harassment.
Okay. The protected class?
It says, it's all you need now is just to say the protected class, so it says sex, race, color, all those things, now it's just called, you get rid of all that, it's called protected class. It's defined at the top of policy four thirteen, of what protected class is.
Got it, got it.
It was shorter and it was nicer, whatever. I just wanna make sure you did that, because that's something we needed to adjust, and then that out-of-state tuition, which we talked about.
Yeah.
And there wasn't anything changing to the family medical leave?
Uh, no, well, we, we accepted, so Amy, I don't know, the MSBA changes, there was some updates, there wasn't much different, I, but. I wouldn't think, it's, we adopted ASBA.
Family and medical leave policy, that's what she said, no changes, just reviewed it, so.
And that's an annual one, so.
Yep. Any more discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, and signed, motion carries. Ten point one, the next board meeting is Monday, July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, at six P M at the DGF community room.
May Glendon?
Yep, I'm feeling more confident.
Feeling better about it.
They're polishing the terrazzo, and the flooring is supposed to go in this week, and Travis said it'll be cleaned, and it'll be, if the furniture guy can't get there to put that, the furniture's here, then we'll just put it together ourselves, well.
At the main.
Yeah, we'll have a work session before we go.
It's got A C in it, right?
It doesn't have A C, it's got that climate control, if you walk in our new high school gym, everybody thinks we got cold, freezing air conditioning in there. It's not an air conditioner, it's a climate, basically, it's a dehumidifier, it works, it's, it's very effective, and it's a little bit less costly, so.
Yeah.
Or at least that's what they tell us.
Ten point two, personnel committee's meeting, the same day, Monday, July twenty-fifth, after conclusion of board meeting in the DGF community room.
We also have a curriculum syllabus continuing ed for teachers meeting at five o'clock for our meeting.
That's right.
Solid.
And who's that, then?
Marianne Martin, Brittany, myself, Todd Bergerson, and Mary Maher.
Okay, very good. All right, with that, meeting is adjourned at seven oh seven.
Yeah. And then we'll just have the budget committee meet here in five minutes or so, or?
Probably break for them, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, good.
Yeah. I did, too, activity, oh, is that?